Okay. Call to order, the meeting of the board's selectmen for November 6th at 6:30. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Keith, would you lead us, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review. Jeff, anything?
Yes. I'd like to add a D under action items on upper house rear entrance.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Jim?
Just that we move under action items A up to in front of informational, just to help some of the town staff that see it tonight.
Yep. Keith, anything?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Jeff?
I'm all set, thank you.
And I'm all set.
Barry?
Yeah.
You forgot someone.
I was gonna go.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking down.
I told you, go.
Sorry. Can I raise my hand?
I know, I saw you.
Could I please add an action item E, under, uh, yeah, action item E, approve current acting manager to sign easements for every source with communities.
With communities, not?
For the communities.
For. Before I jump into the next part of the meeting, I want to make sure that I announce that we will, there will be no voting tomorrow in Newport. They've been getting calls the past few weeks. If we were having an election, it's a citywide election for Clermont and other towns that were having citywide elections. Want to clear up any confusion there is for that? And Paul, would you add introduction of the new public works director?
Sure. I would like to introduce Chris Pelletier back the room here. He is currently eleven hours into the job. Started this morning, a nice long day for him, but Chris joins us, he's most recently been with Keene Water Department, he ran the water department in Keene. Prior to that, he had eight years of experience in Colorado as public works director.
Yes. Shoveling snow.
Absolutely. Lots of snow.
So we were happy to bring him aboard and load him up.
We're certainly glad to have you here.
Thank you.
And Paul can sleep in a little bit, I guess, now?
Yeah, maybe.
Well, I'm excited to be here and I'm up for the challenge and I'm glad to be part of the community and learn some things here in town, so I'm excited.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, welcome aboard again.
Welcome.
Please, Jim.
Thank you.
Welcome to Newport. Okay. You didn't have to fix your hair. The government's here with his knees hanging out, so you're okay.
Well, I'm sure I'll be back in front of you guys in a few jumps.
Good.
Thank you.
Now I'll open up part of the meeting dealing with a public hearing. The board of selectmen of the town of Newport, New Hampshire will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 6th, 2023, at 6:30 PM to discuss the following proposed increases in the town sewer rates, which may become effective in November 2023 and utilized for the April 2024 bill. Rates at present, per thousand gallons, 12.85 is our current rate. Our proposed rate is 1607. I do want, we bill on a three...
Every four months?
Three-month cycle, I think it is.
Four times a year.
Three times a year. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. So I'll open the public hearing.
So do you want a brief overview?
Please.
So currently we have a wastewater treatment plant project to do with a deadline of 2026 by the executive order, order of consent with EPA and New Hampshire DES. Without a change in the rates, this is what happens to our financial stability. We are not even below the recommended, recommended level, but we are below zero. We will be substantially in debt. Realistically, we need about 175% increase, which then brings us to the middle range, so that the blue range and the red light range are the high and low, as recommended by the American Water Works Association, for where you should be for working capital, which is liquid assets essentially. So with 175% increase, we would be right in the middle of the range. We could drop that a little bit, but as you drop it, it tapers off, so we would need an adjustment in future years. 175% is very bad, I mean, that's unrealistic to do at once. So what we are proposing is a 25% increase in 2024 this year. It would take effect for every drop of wa, the meter reading is scheduled for probably Wednesday, and it would start with every drop of water that flows after the meter is read, and it would be essentially billed in April is when, is when these bills would come out. It would be, the meters would be read in March and then bills would come out. But then phasing this in over time, so we're looking at 25% this year, 30%, 30% and then 25%. With that, it looks like in 2031, we would possibly need to make an additional adjustment potentially, but also at that point in time, we're going to have a better idea of what our actual expenses are on the, on the plant. We'll be going to bid in January hopefully, so we'll have a better handle on that, and then we'll also have a better handle on operating costs and things like that. So the nice thing about phasing in like this is we can start acquiring the assets that we need to be able to do the project, but we've got some flexibility in these future years if things turn our way and we get a favorable bid, we get decent operating cost, price of chemicals isn't as bad as we think, those kind of things.
We get another grant?
We get another grant. We will be trying. The biggest issue right now is any, I can't go and get another grant right now because the EPA, not the EPA, USDA grant will knock it off of their number. So until we issue this project, I can't issue another grant, but we have aligned on two different grants that will be applying for the project that both look fairly favorable. We'll get them out, we haven't done this projection yet, but that again is the nice thing about kind of phasing this in, if we had some type of adjustment, we could do that.
Anything from the public? Sure.
Somebody gotta say something. What's the cumulative compounded percent over the three?
It's about, I, I haven't calculated that over these four years as proposed, it's probably about 160, 160 to 165% cumulative. It'll bring the rates in just a little bit lower than 175% one time.
What, what was the biggest cause for us to be in that situation?
So the biggest cause was we need to comply with the, our NIPD permit, our national pollution discharge effluent, our national discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. In 2012, we were given a permit with new rates for phosphors. We tried to achieve those rates, we ended up having a failed project unfortunately, but actually to our benefit, I like to say. In 2020, the permit also looked at metals and nutrients, nitrogen primarily, and those come out with a different process, so if, if we had even been successful back in 2012 with that project, we'd still be doing it, the plant that we're doing now because of the nitrogen and the metals in the EPA permit. These permits go up and down the Connecticut River, and so we are one of the first to qualify for this in New Hampshire.
So tell me if this is a fair synopsis of what happened. 2012, the plant we paid for didn't work.
That's correct.
And the company that did it was sued by the town.
Actually, they sued us first for non-payment because it didn't work, but yes.
And that settlement was for approximately how much money?
That settlement was for about 3.4 million dollars. That was with the, so it was, ended up being the engineers who designed the plant, who ended up paying the most money, the contractor and the sum of the contract. So we have, there were three, four parties, the town and then three other parties, and that was lawsuits.
So was that a new style of plant? Did anyone else in New Hampshire have that type of plant online?
No, they did not. We were sold a bill of goods and internal documents from the company actually ended up showing that they had people in their, their company, the engineering company that said that's not going to work. We didn't find those until, until the lawsuit.
Okay, so we wound up buying essentially a pig and a goat.
True.
So what review process in this new plant did we use that is different than what we did in 12?
So we are using a different engineering firm with more local ties, was the first change. We're using a, a system that is used throughout New Hampshire right now for plants that need to address nitrogen, a sequencing batch reactor plant. They're very common and proven technology, both in New Hampshire and nationwide. They are used to address biologically, chemically, address the nutrients that we're trying to get, and also get the metals. They can also be dialed up or down depending on future permits, so it's adaptable going moving forward. The most ironic thing about it is on the back end of that, of the plant that they're building, they're using the building that we built for the last plant, putting in a different set, a different type of filter to get the phosphorus out. So we are utilizing some of the assets that we previously constructed, so that was a nice saving.
So that is a savings over, over the calamity in the first place, you get to use at least the building out that, what other cities and or towns have the same system that we're installed?
So off the top of my head, I know two, the two that I know of are Whitefield, which is a similar plant to ours, and Exeter.
Last one?
Exeter. But I know there, there are several other plants I just can't remember.
Has any of the, anybody from this community gone and looked at those plants and seen how, and how they're in?
I've seen, we've seen Exeter, Exeter, I'm remaining, I say huh, but we've seen Exeter, quite a much larger plant, but same, same science, so we've seen that. The other thing is, is based on our history, this, this project has seen substantial review and comment from DES, USDA and EPA, so it is being well reviewed by, by the authority, some of the finance, funding authorities, but we have seen, and I know Arnold Greenleaf has seen the plan of this type of plant also.
Okay. Next one.
Bert? Yes, Jeff?
Uh, two questions, or at least one, I take care of the other. When was the last time we had a increase in sewer rates?
2018, we increased, I asked for 25% because we knew that, that we had a large plant coming and the board approved 10%.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, so it's been five years since we last had an increase, and I think at the time we talked about it, we never did anything, but if we went with smaller, three or four, maybe five percent increases each year, we would not be looking at quite as big an increase now.
Not quite as big, but it would still be.
Was that water or sewerable?
That's sewer.
Sewer only?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I mean eighteen, last one we did.
I believe that was sewer, that was sewer only also. In 2011, in preparation for the failed project, we did a small increase, and again, we did this, we did upfront and then planned on phasing it in, and when the plant didn't work, we knew we were going to have to, A, have the operating cost, or B, repay the debt, we withheld, we held back on those.
So from perspective of what Bert has mentioned in terms of our calamity in the beginning, I know we've got more people, more agencies involved in this than we did the last time, but at the same point, are there guarantees that come with this, that if it does fail, fix it, or?
Uh, yes. So there is a performance deck in the, in the bid package, and it will be in the contract. They will need to come back and, and correct it. Like the nice thing, the nice thing is we, the last time we were on the edge of technology, this time we are using some, some tried and true technology.
What are they getting, what are they getting from upfront, for upfront money? I mean, we're going to make sure this thing works before we pay the whole thing, or?
Uh, certainly there'll be a retainage built into the, into the project, and that was part, part of it the last time when we got sued, we were sued for one invoice and then the retainage on the project, so there will be a retainage, probably 10%, the first six months, I imagine, and then it'll probably get reduced to 2% after a period of time. It'll depend when, when they complete, because we will probably, the old plant, when we, or the, the original attempt, we did a, several pilot tests, we pilot tested in September and it worked fine.
Yeah.
The problem was it didn't work with the cold water from the lagoons, and the lagoons didn't put out a, a good enough quality, a standard quality effluent going into the filters and they blinded it. So we're going back to filters, but the effluent coming out of the SBRs is warmer, so it's not coming out of the cold lagoons, it's gone through the process, and it's a very, very constant after.
So I'll get back to the public, Doug, I mean, Bert, you have your hand up, and then I'll start.
I believe New Hampshire has about 234 communities. Only those of us who discharge into waters and go into the Connecticut River are subject to this particular criteria?
That's a good question.
Yes. One of the, one of the things that we looked at back in 2012 was going direct to groundwater, which has its own issues, but then you want, you don't have a discharge permit to the river, but you have a groundwater permit, and then the other one was spraying it into the town forest was an option, but it was going to need to pump across the street, up the hill, and that didn't make sense, but.
Groundwater, we see it out of our control.
We did look at some alternatives for not discharging into, into the river.
So those regulations appear in, Exeter isn't, doesn't discharge into the Connecticut?
No, they, they're actually worse off than we are, they go into Great Bay. So the communities over in Great Bay are, are much more restricted than here.
Do you know what Clermont did?
Well, Clermont hasn't done anything. They are, they are one of the upcoming.
So we, we have to get this done quickly, but they have more time?
I think Chris is the type of person that's. And also, they're also going to have different, we discharge the syrup sugar, which is a much smaller volume of water than the Connecticut, I think, I believe they're, they discharge to the Connecticut.
Uh, they discharge into the Shigga River also. The Shigga River doesn't get to the Vermont line until after Clermont. And you, when you go over the bridges, Scotty, that's the state line, and that's also Clermont's line.
Right.
So everything Clermont has has to be on the side.
Even also discharge in the Connecticut River because the Sugar River doesn't.
Right, it, it ends up in the Connecticut, I thought, or maybe it's that they're close. One of the alternatives that we actually looked at was pumping everything to Clermont, but it was looking like it was going to be about a $60 million project, plus river costs and process, so.
Did anybody think about just discharging into the river and not Clermont?
It was years ago. All the day, good old days.
Uh, no, no, that was not considered.
It was a time when you could fish the river and catch brown trout.
Been less.
So what you're saying, Paul, is we, we, we've looked at all of the corners and crevices this time, and we've come up with where we are.
Yeah, I, I think we have. I, and I know, unfortunately, as a finance director, I know more about wastewater treatment than I ever will, should ever know. But yes, we have, we have done our, our homework on this, we have big board depleted, the state doesn't like to see you walk in the room because they know the plant's going out. Yeah, it's been fine, but we are going to end up, so right now it's estimated a $28 million project, we'll have 14 and a half million of that through grants and donations.
Okay. Doug?
I have about two questions. One is, do we know a number, and it's probably been out before, I just haven't heard it? How many gallons of water the town uses a year?
Yeah, it's around, we've had those numbers, I think it's around 90, or around, does it have 76 million?
Yeah, about 76 million.
And do we have a number on average home per year?
So the state uses 72,000 gallons per household for family of four, I believe that's what when we get, when you look at state average rates, that's what they use. I don't know where that comes from, but.
Okay. Well, we don't, we don't have it broken down for the town, but we do know. Thanks.
Yes?
I think that, both Keith and I were at the meeting when DES came in, and it was, it was informative and sad and helpful and all the above, you know, because it's, it's a reality check and it's, and it's, it's tough. I don't think there's anyone on this board, or, or Paul, or in the audience who doesn't know the critical nature of what's happening, not in terms of necessarily the work, but in terms of what this is going to cost town in Newport and its residents, and there is nothing to be done about, I saw the lagoons, the lagoons, they aren't an ongoing option, they are in themselves, they are not in incredibly good condition, you know, but they are going to serve their purpose for what they have to, and they hold a substantial amount of waste themselves that has, has to be addressed or not addressed at some future date, I don't know. But this, I did my own research on what these processes are, and they're, as they say, sequential batch processors, and they are widely used, there's a lot of different varieties of them, this happens to be one variety, but, but to say that there's only two, the state would, I would, I suspect that, I think Sunapee has a variation of it, they call it like a ditch or some other, but they're basically all the same thing, using this very similar technology, it just happens to be the way this engineering firm is doing it, but it, but it's a pretty proven technology, but it is expensive, and, and I think that. But it, but it's a pretty proven technology, but it is expensive and, and I think that, in the previous meetings, um, this was supposed to be a thirty percent increase originally and I sat down with Paul and we, we talked about it for a long time and, um, I know the increase is inevitable and it's, and it's, there's, there's no saying no, you know, and I wish there was because it infects industry, big industry and then people use water, I mean, every, every flush of the toilet is, is a serious flush now and every shower is, you know, should be thought of as not a ten-minute shower, but maybe an eight-minute and not a twenty-minute and, and, you know, there's concerns about, you know, some other manufacturers or every dishwasher that gets used in every restaurant and how much more it costs to do dishes, it's not a little bit amount of money, it's not a little bit increase, it's, it's eventually going from, you know, the thirteen to thirty-six, but doing one first, I still like to stay optimistic that things could not be as bad as we project and with having some time, that we could possibly look at other things and, and we talked about a few things like expanded solar fields and, and, and the other grant and then now, I don't have my notes with me, what's the name of the one that, that you can pick up in about three years that is a, maybe, not a grant, but a?
State, state aid grant is that the state, if it's funded by the state legislature, will reimburse us up to thirty percent a year of, uh, towards the debt payments, uh, which is, which is the.
Is real money?
It is real, it's, it's over a million dollars a year.
And, and so, so, so we, we looked at those things, but it, but it's not, it's not fair to tell the public that it is gonna happen. We, we, we're painting a worst-case scenario and, and, and it's the only fair way to, to do it is that people know what, what they may have to deal with. But I think with, between this board and town management and citizens, that we can make this a serious thing to look at over the long term and not just let it be as it sits, although we, we know that we are stuck with the build, that, that is what it is and we waited a long time and, and, and everything skyrocketed, I mean, we had a community center that even five years ago was probably four million dollars and now it's, you know, ten million dollars. You know, it's, everything went crazy, a house you could build for two hundred thousand is now five hundred thousand, you know, so, so we are where we are and, and it doesn't bother anyone, probably more than me, I'm the second biggest water user in Newport. It's sewage user, you know, it's, it's, I have a huge impact and then, and, and I will personally adjust, um, as, as will others, but I would, from my perspective, I'm trying to stay optimistic on this for what we can do as a group, I think this is an excellent board and I think not, there's not one of us here that doesn't understand the very serious nature of this increase and I don't think anyone in the public should, should think otherwise, you know, in my opinion. And that's really hard to say is that this, this, I'd love to say no, but I don't think there is any saying no.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Board members? Jeff?
Uh, I think I'm good.
I'm all set.
Keith?
Um, not so much as what we're gonna do with how much it costs, but, um, like, I pay my property tax, my insurance on my house, you know, an escrow account, my bank, is there some way that possibly getting the water sewer bill attached in that way, uh, or possibly go to a monthly bill, because that, three times a year kind of, kind of throws me off a little bit.
Interesting.
Just some, just some ideas out there, maybe make it easier for people to anticipate what they got coming.
Thing is, water and sewer department people actually physically have to go around and read each meter, you know, and they're doing it three times a year versus do it every month, I mean.
Yeah.
Some places have automatic reading, the truck can drive by and read it through radio signals and stuff and I think Paul's looked at that once or twice and that is a very expensive option to go, but at some point we may have to, but.
Well, as far as that goes, you can do something like, uh, like my parents had on their fuel bill, they paid a monthly fee and then twice a year they had, they paid an adjustment and if they use less, then they pay less that sixth month or twice first or more.
They do that, huh?
Yeah, uh, you could do something like that without increasing the cost of.
Interesting perspective, yeah. Do you adjust your escrow after this last?
It actually went down.
Oh, God bless you.
Um, I would just say, say to that, that, um, we do, we do that ourselves, so you can go to your bank and if you know about the water sewages, you can ask them to escrow that into your, into your mortgage, so it's kind of like doing it yourself, but it's good for the public to know because we used to get blindsided with, with ours because they were huge and then now, oh, I get all this money, I go buy a new washing machine, you know, and it, it is, I have to, it is helpful, so if you haven't, you get the one bill and you say, go to your bank, say, listen, can you just escrow me on my, on my?
So you can do that?
Yeah, and then, and they'll just.
Go through it with your esc, with your escrow.
And if you have extra money at the end of the year, you spend it and if you don't, you dump it back, sort of like, you know, that little Christmas account you do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a Christmas card.
Yeah.
Well, so just, um, discussion of, um, more frequent buildings has come up, uh, the engineers don't understand why we're doing it three times a year, we currently don't have the staff, so if we, we added bills, I would need to add an additional person in that department, um, so that's, that's really the biggest kicker on, on why we do the bill or not. But we do encourage escrows, you are in interest, we accept prepayments, uh, so if somebody wanted to commit and pay monthly, uh, they could do that, uh, but we're not kind of, we don't give interest, so there's a whole.
So there are ways that could be.
There are ways that you could credit out, but certainly escrows or, or even just personal savings account, knowing that's my.
Would it be possible, say, when the next bills go out, we include a little flyer in there reminding people or letting people know that if they're currently escrowing mortgage and, you know, property taxes, they can, they should talk to their bank to see if they can also escrow their water and sewer bills if they want?
We might talk about that here in our article. Do we have the right for that?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you. Yes, Jeff?
Um, I would, I'll say, and it didn't make it on here, but I would like to just, thought it might come up during this, is that I'm very interested in, in this just because I am and I would really like to at some point see about, form a committee that would, you know, I'm happy to chair unless somebody else wants to do it, of, of people who may be interested in, in looking at this over a period of time and probably is appropriate to wait till the new town manager's in to, to, to do such, but I, I don't want it to fall to the wayside where, where a year from now and other things have happened, we've had a twin office and we're like, oh, we're, now we're looking at another thirty percent, kind of like while the, while the ball's rolling and while, you know, seeing how that, how that works out and, um, I wouldn't know when the appropriate time is to do that or whether it's when there's a new town manager here, if that's the time, but I would be interested in that if the board would consider the discussion.
First of the year, once we put out bids and we see what the cost actually is, we may have some adjustment there.
Yeah.
And maybe have that committee sort of, I don't know if working as a clerk of the works or not, but sort of like work with the, uh, fellow works director, uh, looking at, you know, possible efficiencies.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all, and I, I don't know, I don't know how that forms or how that takes place, but I know that I'm, I'm very interested in this and some things I'm interested in.
Let me throw one other thing out if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we, along with being the selectmen, we are the quote-unquote water and sewer commissioners. Perhaps maybe once or twice a year, we should have a separate water and sewer commission meeting strictly on water and sewer issues, I don't know if we need to do that or not, but some communities, they have a whole separate board that are just water and sewer commissioners.
I think that that, you know, it ties in with what you've said, I don't want this thing to just go by the board and, you know, the last time we talked about it, we went down to ten percent and then kind of like, okay, and we could do it after that. So I like the idea of, Jeff, you know, either we as a group meet.
We are the water and sewer commissioners.
Yeah, I know that, every three months or so and see where we are, you know, thing, or we do form a committee, but I think if it's our responsibility, I think we better hold on to, you know, I think we better, better make sure we do something within our regular basis.
Not go five years between adjustments.
That's correct. It was what happened. Anything else from the public? In that case, I will close the public hearing and I would indulge the members of the public and the board, if I could add under informational, E, I'll just call it conservation commission.
Got a reminder that walked in the room.
That's when I saw him come in, I said, oh, I forgot to put that on. What's that? Oh, I know you. Yeah, I know. I always like to recognize you. Okay, minutes from the previous meeting, October sixteenth, regular business meeting.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, on page three of four, second paragraph up from the bottom, open forum, Eric Stalden speaks to the board, on the second line of that, he goes on to say contemplating rehearing or sowing the town, I believe that's an incorrect word, sowing.
Sueing the town, probably is what.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's the only one I noticed.
Oh, that's a good catch. Anything else? We had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstaining.
Opposed? Abstain? One, one abstention. And, uh, October sixteenth, non-public minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? One abstention. Okay. And consent agenda, which is on the backside of our agenda.
Move to accept.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And informational.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
You moved action item up.
Yes. Thank you. You know, I'm getting too old for this crap.
It's all the hours of drawing this.
I know. This could be my last minute.
Tell the next one.
We'll move up, vote to accept and expend twenty twenty-three ILO home security grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Call of the chief?
Thank you, sir. Uh, we've been very fortunate this year in terms of, uh, our grant applications, this is the sixth grant that we've been awarded this year, uh, since I started in January, totaling about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars between the six grants. This grant is for our intelligence liaison officer, Detective Tom Anderson. Uh, this is a homeland security grant that pays for a substantial portion of the costs associated with his position. The intelligence liaison officer works part-time here in our building and part-time at the intel and analysis center in Concord, so, uh, they're a liaison between all the local law enforcement agencies in this region of the state and the, uh, New Hampshire Central Intelligence Center. They collect intelligence on terrorism, on criminal activity, of other types of hazards. Uh, recently, they've been very busy between the active shooter situation and other sort of large-scale emergencies and they distribute bulletins to our department, so our patrol officers are updated about vehicles they should be looking for, missing people, things of that nature and we can be keeping, uh, an eye out for threats. We also, when we have a, a local investigation here, such as the recent graffiti vandalism investigations, we will then distribute through the ILO to other agencies information in hopes of receiving suspects and leads back, so it's a very valuable position. Detective Anderson has been in law enforcement for thirty-one years, he's been the intelligence liaison officer here in Newport for six and a half years, he retired as a lieutenant in, uh, New London before coming here, so, you know, a person with his experience level and his expertise, working full-time without a grant like this would probably cost the town a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, all said and done, between the fact that he's retired, working part-time and this very substantial grant, we get that level of experience and that value to the community for just a very small fraction of what it would actually cost. He also, uh, manages my evidence room for me and he's, uh, has a particular expertise in processing crime scenes and forensics, so we use him quite frequently dusting for fingerprints, casting shoe prints, tire prints, things of that nature, so we get a tremendous amount of value out of having him here, uh, and the state's picking up a, a good portion of the bill. So I'm just respectfully requesting that the board vote to accept and expend the twenty twenty-three ILO homeland security grant award of forty thousand dollars and authorize the current and active town manager to sign any related grant documents, I put thirty-five pages of, uh, grant documents on his desk last week, so, uh, with your permission, I will, uh, nag him until he signs them.
Any discussion from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, chief, what is this detective doing now? Is this gonna be taking him away from other duties and you're gonna have to fill those duties with other officers or?
No, he's.
Just impact staffing, basically.
Uh, he's been in this role for six and a half years already.
Yeah.
Um, this position was specifically created for this, uh, grant program, we've been taking advantage of this grant year after year, so, uh, this is just continuing what we've already been doing for the last six and a half years, if we did not receive this grant, uh, that position would essentially go away, so we would lose that sort of experience and that talent, uh, it's not something that we could afford to reassign him to other duties without this grant.
Okay, yeah, so basically it's, the state's providing funding for this and the region gets the benefit of his intelligence duty and we get his expertise more because he's basically headquartered here.
That's right, if, uh, if we didn't have, uh, this position hosted here and another agency were to assume the ILO for this region, uh, when we needed a bulletin sent out or we needed federal databases searched for information, we would have to reach out to other agencies and go through a, a process, filing request forms and things like that for the information we needed. When we have a big case here in Newport, because we have the ILO in-house here, I could simply walk over to his desk and say, I need everything that you can get me on this person, this suspect, and he can go into his computer, run all that information for us, or if we have a suspect or other information that needs to get put out, rather than there being a week or two delay as it filters through the process down in Concord, again, I just bring him the information and it's sent out statewide or New England-wide within an hour, so. We, here in Newport, we get a benefit that none of the other towns around us get by hosting the ILO here.
How large your region does, does this position serve? It's a regional position, it's like all of Sullivan County or?
It's, it's greater than that, um, so he covers sort of the western part of the state, there's a handful, maybe four or five other ILOs scattered throughout the state, mostly centered down in like Manchester, Nashua, that area, um, but, so he has duties that are statewide, but, um, we mooch quite a bit off of him locally here for our own purposes outside of his ILO duties.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, we've had this position for, going on a decade now and we are very much, very fortunate to have this position, we would certainly be seeing, uh, greater requests for budgetary internally if this position wasn't at least partially grant-funded, so we're very fortunate that we have the west position covered here in Newport, it makes Newport a safer community, we are the first to know things that are going on in around the state and around the country, so we benefit from that knowledge, the patrol officers have firsthand knowledge, that much faster because we have this person embedded within the department, so.
Actually, I can give you another example, just over the weekend, um, there was a fake bomb threat or a mass shooting threat to our local McDonald's, um, these frequently happen at Walmarts, McDonald's, school districts where false threats are called in throughout the state in many different communities and so with the benefit of the ILO, um, as soon as we get that threat, we, uh, bring it to Tom and he's usually able to tell us, actually Concord and Hillsborough and Clermont all received similar threats this morning, so that helps us, um, kind of calculate what our proper response should be as well. So we get much timely or information by having him here, then again, if we had to go through the, the formal process to get this kind of intelligence information.
Any other questions or comments from the board? So I'll look, actually, the chief made a motion, but I'll call somebody.
I've moved to accept and expend the twenty twenty-three ILO homeland security grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars and authorize the acting interim town manager to sign all block which related to that grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure I'm not missing anything else here. Informational. We have a resignation that I would like to mention tonight and take a vote of the board to accept.
We don't accept. I mean, she's an elected position.
I'm glad.
You know, I mean, we can.
Let me just read this then. It is with a heavy heart that I tender my resignation as the moderator of the town of Newport effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Husband and I will be moving out of Newport, so I am no longer eligible to serve as a moderator. I will continue to serve as chair of the Town Manager Search Committee as the work will conclude prior to my move. I will continue to be chair of the Heritage Commission until the next meeting. So it's with a heavy heart that I read and deal with this resignation. But he's done a lot for this town over the decades that she's been involved. I've known her in several different positions. And so, you know, we're certainly going to miss her here. She'd keep her in line at during the voting, things like that, so. Does a good job, very good job. Eric.
Now, between us, let's see how many we can come up with. She was our representative Sullivan County.
Correct.
Rep.
Yep.
Select person for near twenty years.
Yes.
School board.
School board.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, assistant, interim superintendent.
Yes, okay.
Interim superintendent.
Okay, we're at five.
She also was the head of CTE for the state for a period of time.
And before that, she was head up here.
That's right. She was the head of the, our own CTE heritage.
Yeah, I think that ties together. So that's six.
Sullivan Waste District, representative there for twenty years.
Yep.
That was a fun job.
I think she's very helpful at the Art Center.
Oliver Art Center.
Oliver Art Center.
Okay.
We're at eight.
Impressive.
She was on zoning board for a long time, wasn't she?
She what?
She on zoning? I thought she was on zoning board.
If it was, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that. So we're at eight.
I also remember something that I found to be, it's one of those things that I went, wow, it's when you asked her to pin your stars on, or whatever it is that she was pinning on. I thought that was.
Your badge?
That, no, not the badge, yeah, but it wasn't. When you became chief, you asked her to do some pinning. I thought that was quite a nice gesture on your part and showed how much you respected her in terms of the process.
Paul, perhaps a nice letter from us thanking her for her many decades of service to the town. Whatever town she's going to, they're going to be certainly better off for having her, and it's certainly Newport's loss, so. Special thanks to Biddy Virginia Irwin for all of her many decades of service to the town and to the greater community. They're certainly a better place because of it.
Absolutely.
So we can all sign it.
Please.
Yes.
I was gonna say, do you want that from you or your badge?
From us.
From us.
Think.
Personalized from us.
Good thing that she was also like the assistant superintendent even though she wasn't given the title. She wasn't.
She was.
I thought she might have.
I think she had the title.
They called her something.
Director of Education.
That's correct.
I particularly with Biddy, she knows this from me, is that she wasn't overly partisan. She may have had her views, it may have been my views, but it was never, at least for me, never.
Never personal?
No, it wasn't. So through that, we maintained friendship. And there's many people that I couldn't say the same for, and I appreciate that about her, and there's so little of that left in the world. So I just want to say.
Good.
That means to me.
Okay. We didn't mention monuments or any of that, so I think we made ten.
She's kept that going.
I think we made ten.
Ten.
Yeah.
Historical society, we could be ten.
Wow.
Whenever I think of the morning committee or whatever, I think of that bowling ball rolling down, building that back. Or cannonball, I guess.
Cannonball, it was a cannonball.
Do you want to also mention the interim workplace?
I'm doing it. Thank you, Jeff. And then I have our town clerk. Sue, what's that?
Supervisor checklist.
Supervisor.
Her. Let me read it. Present to RSA Title five sixty-three, Elections Section six-six-nine, colon sixty-two. We, the supervisors of the checklist for the town of Newport, appoint Kenneth Dufort as moderator effective immediately. Disappointment is effective until the town election in May twenty twenty-four.
You can name for me, please.
Kenneth Dufort, D U F O R T.
Is Biddy also the school moderator?
No. Oh, wait a minute. She is, yes, she is.
You guys be getting a similar letter?
Well, but supervisors are supervisors for everybody, so.
Okay, but it's a separate election.
It is, it's, yeah, interesting.
Good. So again, Biddy, thank you. Hope you're listening tonight. Certainly appreciate everything you've done over the decades for this town. Next, informational, community center update. Paul?
So the, if anybody's come down that way or not been down that way, the construction trailer's on site. Fencing will be coming in in the next week, I believe. The two buildings, the fire, the ambulance garage and the maintenance garage, the building and grounds maintenance garage, were used for training for the last two weekends by the fire department. They had unsmoked them up and cut the holes in the roof and doing all that. I would anticipate they will be gone by Thanksgiving, and the dirt work will start. We need, and this is the action item that we added, we need to obtain an easement for power of new power poles. We'll be getting one from the elderly housing for Ash Street, the last pole on Ash Street. And when it turns onto Meadow, we need three poles to get to close to the entrance for the new center. So I'll be asking, we'll be asking for you to approve me to sign those. We're moving forward. The application for the state grant is due on the twenty-third, I believe. Allison is diligent in working on that, and we're making sure we're aligned with that, and we're moving forward.
And that's the last big jump, although we've found some other ways we may be able to deal with that.
We.
Okay, that's all I want to say, yeah. Okay, good. Any questions from the board? Jeff?
With that, another ambulance was relocated. I just want to make sure that, I believe that it's been relocated into one of Patton's garages or two of them, right? And because everything comes up quickly, just like in the water suit plant that I assumed from my discussions with Hunter before he left, that there was some funding in here available for the renovation of the existing rec center to be able to put those in there because that was originally slated for the, for the bus barns, and then that would be moving over into to there. And at what point we start that planning, because everything comes up so quickly to get the bids out for what it might cost to cut a door, et cetera, like that, and if we'll be discussing that.
So I've received a few names of architects that might do that work for us. I'm not going to use Bradlow necessarily. I have not had a chance to reach out to them. They're still on the online. We'll meet with, realistically, it's going to be building the crowds, ambulance, police, and rec, fighting for the storage, which is already too small a building. But we'll get moving on that and get it laid out and get cost estimates on improvements. We won't be able to do those until probably June of twenty-five.
Right.
Because the recs, the recs aren't willing to be out of there. We'll start renovations.
So donors been notified of this? To make sure, a lot of people have donated. I'd like to make sure, especially, I know you're reaching out tonight, that they know where we are with this process.
Some of the donors, I've talked to individually, and I've talked with others.
Good.
We are moving forward.
Excellent, good news.
Thank you.
Main Street paving and fire hydrant relocation. Jeff?
So that was mostly, I posed as a question because I was, you know, as far as the fire hydrant relocation, I know that we had talked about it and wanted it to not be where we hadn't forgotten about until spring, and they're like, here we are paving, and oops, we didn't do it. If anything has moved forward on that, if we're kind of where we were before, where we have a general idea, but.
Yeah, we're still, we have not moved forward on that. We're going to get a cost estimate, but then we'll split on having it in before the paving. I have, we'll be reaching out, but starting Christmas morning, it has freed up at least an hour today. So I need to reach out to DOT to try and confirm. I'm not sure if they're going back, betting they're going back out to bid, but I need to talk to them about that, propose timetable for that, and also to confirm that they will be painting the crosswalks down the lights and those type things. Looking at the drawings that I received in October, they do have the lines there, so not going to assume I'm going to ask to confirm that they'll be painting those. And then the other thing that we need to do is just kind of follow the final plan for our striding.
Right. I, the reason why I'd like to bring this up is I just have a lot of people asking, you know, when is me, still asking, when is me, is we going to get paved? And just that it got moved into next, into next summer, and that it will, it will get paved, that it's still, it's not a maybe. I believe that that is, it is slated, it just moved too far out of this year and into next year. And I did, I was curious on the, on the crosswalks, I think it's been several years since those have been painted. And if that is, if we normally do that, or if the state normally does that, because I don't fully, you know, I know what a state road is, and I know what a town road is. It's pretty obvious, it's eleven one oh three and Route ten, and where they are, but I don't know what the response, where the responsibilities lie, or what we can or can't do. In other words, the crosswalks are not painted.
Which crosswalks?
The crosswalks, they cross the state, the state roads.
You mean downtown?
Downtown, right. Well, they would cross anywhere on the state road, right? So state road is state road, so I would guess that.
We paint those, and it's actually something I've commented to Paul about.
Right.
Can we paint those on fall, especially since we took down the signs that may inform that, hey, people may be crossing here. And, you know, based upon the amount of work the crews had and the fact, normally that's done at night when it's warm enough for the paint to dry, but unfortunately, you know, this hall, at night it gets cold enough, you know, that may be difficult for the paint to dry, and doing it during the day, you'd basically have to divert traffic, which creates its own issue. Now, the crosswalks down here at the light?
Yeah.
That is a state responsibility, which they haven't done for years. And I think we did it, have done it a few times.
Yes.
But maybe once they pave through there, they may consider putting crosswalk markings down there.
Yeah, I, I guess primarily, as I'm sure everyone is getting, those are the questions, I guess, mostly down there, the lights. And so I just don't know where that, where that lies, you know, in terms of, I know that the crosswalks that were further up, you know, on North Main Street, they got done by company this summer, because I stopped and spoke to them for a few minutes. And I agree, it's probably too late in the year, and it all comes off with the salt anyways, so it's all going to be gone by spring. But it probably is too late. I just, this may be some for the future.
I'll be commenting a little bit more about state and town and potholes when we get to communication that we see.
Just to follow up on that, Paul, do you recall maybe eight or more years ago now, we tested a stamping up by Coronisus in that crosswalk? Because we had such an issue with paint wearing through. This was a embossed or kind of carved into the freshly paved pavement and then painted so it held up better longer. Because the paint was subsurface to the pavement.
Right, it was actually almost like a gel. And I don't, I remember them being done, I remember them going away relatively fast quickly and not worth the, they were probably five to six times the cost of.
I know that we had explored other options, Jeff, for a longer lasting crosswalk to minimize, one, the town labor, town forces doing it, the cost of the paint, all that.
Absolutely.
And it just, I remember it lasted just a goch long, but it wasn't long enough to make it worthwhile.
I don't think we got two years out. We used to paint them annually, and I don't know if we got two, we might have got two or not three out of, out of the paint. It was like you said, it was grooved, and then they melted this paint, plastic, whatever it was, into those grooves. Really worked well.
Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, you've seen this up in Lebanon around the green there?
Oh, that's beautiful.
The yellow ones across there, and they have red striped ones, and they had another color there. It was almost like, what do these colors mean? But I noticed it today driving through that a lot of that is still there this late in the year.
That's.
They were done in the spring, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, they're using a different kind of paint than we are, but.
It's like they use a spray can. It's not very.
Another difference there is that Route level one oh three is the second busiest east-west highway in the state. I don't think it gets anywhere near the traffic that the town green does and handles.
No way.
So it's, it's all traffic related, and if you look where our wear issues are, the wear in the town is in the travel lane, so.
Yeah.
It's maybe a touch-up, not a complete repaint.
Yeah.
But that's the nice thing about having our own equipment. In the summertime, we could do that this time of year.
I suspect we thought it was going to be paved and repainted, and we weren't being overly concerned about it for right now, but for me, it was just more a question of, you know, because people ask, and so I like to be able to answer, answer them, you know, when they say, who's supposed to do that? And then I don't know, so, you know, we'll just.
The other thing that I've heard a little bit about is why we got rid of the green crosswalks and went to the piano keys. Because they're up, but just something to think about.
Okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask, but have you had any complaints about the paving that Pike did from here to Kellyville? How rough it is?
I have not heard anything.
And he was probably, every place they stopped with a truck to redo, they have a, you can feel it going right down through there. I am surprised that Pike did it that way. It just must be at night and dark that they didn't do it, you know? I just, very disappointed there.
There was something to it, because didn't they have to redo a section of the other one?
And that wasn't Pike, that was somebody else.
That's right. Oh, that was somebody.
That was somebody else, had to go back and dig it all up. And I'm surprised that DOT hasn't got after them on this section, because you just go right up around by the motel right there, and boom, it's a bump right there where it starts, you know? I get disappointed in Pike, I mean, he's supposed to be some of the best, you know?
Well, they clearly had a problem with their sprayer. Those stripes were pretty unique. As they blended into each other.
It's an interesting case with the section that my mom done, it was the cracks and the new pavement. And they had to redo all of the sections that we saw that they redid. And if you went walking and looking for the cracks, you didn't see them, but you can understand it would get larger. With here, going up out of town, you get the washboard up back, and you get the same thing coming out of Kellyville. And then I talked with District Two, so I don't understand why you pay people to make bumps. There's always a bump going on to the bridge, mostly all of them, and they figured out how to do that, Jeff.
Speed bumps keep speed down.
Well, it's not speed bumps.
They don't bother that, does anybody? Every time I go up that hill, I get passed by the two or three of them.
That's surprising.
Yes, I do get passed.
We'll never see it here, but the paving markings, I really enjoy, especially as I get older and harder to see at night, or what they have out in Western Mass, and what I see now in the Pacific Northwest. I mean. I mean, I mean they dig into the pavement and have little reflectors there, so...
Yeah, they're nice.
You actually can see even rainy weather, that's where the middle of the road is, you know, and that's where the curbs, sides are. There's some effort to do that, which I don't think we'll ever see up here.
Well, interesting. All right, winter plowing. Jeff?
So, pre-snowstorms, which is probably piling up very quickly. I, you know, I guess being on Main Street a lot myself, I don't, I don't really know how we address snow removal on Main Street. And to understand that the businesses that are on Main Street, although it may seem like they whine a lot about the snow, they don't have any other parking. So when you go down to Shaw's and they clear the lot, they can park there, but Main Street businesses have Main Street and Main Street only. So when it gets clogged up, especially, especially if it snows on a Friday and it doesn't get cleared till Monday or Tuesday, it's really bad. Not only is it bad in the sense of the sheer volume of snow that is left in those parking spots that don't get cleared away, it is, it is a hazard because people don't park, they start parking parallel in there. And, and they're in layers of slush and snow and the business along Main Street try to do their best to try to do that. And I know several people who take the plowing on themselves and will, and will use their plow people to make big piles. And know, I know that myself and other people don't really know, know where to go and, and who to ask and, and why isn't getting done and, and schools take precedent and, but if maybe we can formulate a plan, we can explain to the business of Main Street what the schedule is, what they should do about cars parking who are there, because it's a big problem. We have to address that because we're 24/7. So, and how we, you know, because if you have a car there, you sure as heck aren't plowing it because you can never knock anyone to move it. So enforcing some of that, which will be with the police department, and I think you've come knocking on my door a few times and saying, can you find out who's, who's there, they need to move, we're coming through to plow? And we do that. But that it's, it's, it's easy to not realize how truly devastating it is to a small business and how impactful and important their parking is to their business. When losing a day or two can be, can be bad for the business from anywhere from Salt Hill to the pizza places to, you know, up on, on this side of Main Street. So I don't, I don't know what the answer, I mean, Paul, maybe you do, you know, it's, it's an ongoing problem for a lot of years.
Yeah, no question. It's always hard when the guys go out and plow, sometimes these storms are 24, 36 hours long.
Yeah.
And they work 24, 36 hours to keep the roads clear. And unfortunately, the banks build up and then they have to go home, get a quick night's sleep to come back in and come back out and dress it again and then to come back and pick up snow. So I know they always historically have worked it into their schedule as soon as possible, given though using a long work hours on a big storm, they have a deposit, you know, snowbanks to go on back and pick them up in as fast and reasonable time as they possibly can do it. And I know they even changed the schedule because it always used to be done at night and we moved it to sometimes during the day to just be more in line with the regular work schedule than... So I know that it's, it's always been highways priority about getting back as fast as they could after a big storm to get it picked back up because it is an issue. And it's an issue that historically has always garnered a lot of phone calls to the BD and a lot of phone calls to the town office and a lot of phone calls to public works.
Jeff?
Yeah, two things. I mean, you mentioned, you know, school has a priority, but normally schools cancel that day, so...
Well, we've, we've received some hate from some people in terms to, of complaining about it, that schools take priority and what kind of nerve do I have to ask to have Main Street cleared? So I'm just saying that that's, you know...
School's, school's going to cancel, let's be able to...
My, my thought exactly, I'm just saying.
It threatens flurry to cancel.
I also want to say, I know one or two times I've gone through there in the morning going to work like 6:30 or so in the morning and I've been impressed with how well it has been cleaned up. So it's not...
Which part? And who's doing it?
I would say the town is because I mean, it, sometimes the town gets through there and does it, you know, maybe sometimes they don't. As Jim says, it depends upon the storm, you know, whether, you know, if the storm gives them a break to do it.
The, the problem is that we aren't really allowed to do it ourselves and people are doing themselves. A lot of that cleanup you see is not being done by the town. The issue is that if you take your personal vehicle there and do it, and if you confirm this or not, that that's not okay backing up on Main Street and, and doing this. And we put them in, we deposit them in big piles along Main Street. And so, so one of the, one of the solutions is to say, where are we going to put the big piles? The piles are okay if we, if you leave them so you can clear them out, you have these huge mounds in certain spots that can then be, be removed, but it's sort of like, you're okay with that, but it's leaving a large amounts of slush. And so I'm not saying that this can be answered here, but maybe it warrants a little further discussion about what this plan might look like so that the people aren't forced in backing up with their, with their vehicles and, and trying to plow that.
The moving of snow and depositing in the big piles is contrary to town ordinance that exists today. So if you move snow, unless you are removing it from Main Street, you can't by ordinance do that.
Right.
Because if you pile it up in a pile, then you're taking away parking spots because that pile is in either blocking a crosswalk, blocking line of sight and visibility for other people backing up or whatever, or it's taking up parking spots. So moving it that way, I've always, when I was chief frowned upon that and spoke to businesses that did that because it was contradictory and it actually made it harder for town forces to pick it up later.
Right.
Bert, you got a question? Comment?
I believe, and I'll verify this, the school pays for the school district.
No, it can be school lots, I mean the roads to school, you know, for school buses to get up and down the streets.
Sidewalks and...
Yes.
The snow.
I think they do. Chief?
Yeah, I, just related to this discussion, I did just send out a message on our Facebook page and the town website the other day about the winter parking ban, just reminding everybody that started November 1st in the overnight hours from midnight to I think 7:30 AM. The officers are already out the last couple of nights, starting to issue warnings. I do get a lot of calls from people saying, this is kind of ridiculous, why are you giving me a hard time, there's no snow yet, et cetera. We can't wait until we already have a snowstorm and somebody's car is blocking the road to start reminding people that they can't be parking overnight. So we're trying to establish those habits now so that we prevent a problem going forward. But since Jeff mentioned like the gym as an example, you know, a patron in the overnight hours might think, oh, I'm just going to be here for an hour, but then it causes the plow to make a big swing around them and now you've, you have three, four parking spaces there that are not going to get cleared for the rest of the night potentially. It's not like the plow driver that's moved on somewhere else can say, oh, I bet that guy's done at the gym, I'm going to swing back through and get those spaces. So I just ask for everybody's cooperation with the no overnight parking on the streets from now until May 1st. And, you know, we're using our discretion earlier in the season to issue warnings, but as we get into the real snowstorms and so forth, we're going to have to ticket and/or tow cars, so people are forewarned.
I want to bet you that on the radio.
Bert?
And you have one other huge problem with the regulations now for CDL drivers. They have made it, one, very expensive, as I think you're all aware, and very technical. The knowledge necessary to drive a commercial vehicle is, in my opinion, extreme. Over the road, tractor-travel drivers is a different story, but for municipalities drivers to, to have to meet the same criteria, I think is unreasonable and unnecessary. But Jim, your statement of being out there 24 to 36 hours clear on, they can't do that. And they, they violate the law, they lose their license. And so if you've got plowers, drivers that are out those kind of hours, you put the public at risk that you're, you're removing the snow to make it safe for them to travel and you're putting a person behind the wheel that could be there beyond his hours that he can work. So there needs to be some sort of a variance for municipalities in order to make it continue. Outside of that, we will be using toboggans and sleds rather than cars in the winter.
Is this, is this a state requirement, this, that being stricter or is it from the feds?
Well, which comes down from feds.
Yes, the feds.
Right. The fed sets the criteria and the states have to go by it. But for those who plow as a safety thing, there should be a variance so that you don't have to be as qualified to drive that six-wheeler as you do driving an 18-wheeler or a log truck that weighs 60, 70, 80,000 pounds. Because it's what's making it hard for you people to, to get CDL, drive them.
Of course, one vehicle that doesn't need a CDL to drive is a fire truck. And I jokingly said in the past, if you put plows on the fire trucks, then anyone can drive.
We'll give you a little buy more fire trucks.
Yeah, there you go.
It's an expensive product. So just two things. One, we do try to put backup crews out so we're not running 24, 36 hours.
The point I was making more was these prolonged storms, it's hard on staff.
And even getting the backup crews is... The other issue that has exacerbated the Main Street problem is the state now on Plan Five, the travel. It used to be they plowed curb to curb. And so you wouldn't get that foot of slush that the town doesn't go back in and get till later on. Some of the local residents or businesses have it cleaned up. But that has been a huge difference in the quality of Main Street dirt in this area. We're really the average, under quality. Maybe a point.
Yes, Bernie, done. So I've, I've noticed and, and I think we're all aware of the issue of getting employees. And I would assume, because last year appeared to be the, for me, appeared to be the worst year for clearing that I've ever seen. And the state seems to come in and plow into the middle section, but not the sidewalk side. So basically all that snow gets pushed over to the sidewalk sides on both sides. They seem to get the middle area and it's cleared out, which really puts an abundance of snow on the side that people like to get out of the car. So there's, so they force park there, but it is cleared out there. I was wondering if, in particular last year, it was midweek seemed to be pretty good, you could kind of count on that snowstorm, day in between, snow removal until the weekend hit. And it was a weekend one. It was usually left pretty much until Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday to clear it. And it was really, really bad last year. And I don't know if that was a staffing issue. So I understand that, that getting employees the last few years has been challenging, at best, probably a lot worse than challenging. And maybe it was, maybe it was a staffing issue, maybe it was a budgetary issue, maybe it was overworked, but it was, it was definitely, it was more of a weekend, sort of like it was left till Monday. So I'm not sure. I'm not sure where that, where that stood, if that was sort of like we don't plow and we don't remove snow on weekends.
I'm not sure. I always thought it was a case that coming Sunday night, you're ready for Monday morning, which may be Saturday, but...
Yeah, well, that, that would be bad.
But I can't really...
We have a work director who knows snow.
Yeah.
And we'll see...
In Colorado, they'll be able to figure it out.
Yeah. Bert?
For Newport, you're usually the center of this is done by a contractor, not by a state employer, done by contract. So you may have some leverage as to the quality of work through the district office.
Good. How are we doing, just a comment, how are we doing getting lined up with people who are plowing?
We are currently the final position on the highway side that we need to fill as superintendent. We'll wait until the director started, reach out to more five candidates who had previously expressed interest and we will report to that. Drivers, we are currently full.
We bring extra plow people online, I mean, I go by these big signs that we're hiring plow people.
We have a couple people who have, have offered to be a work team as a backup crew.
Yeah.
Not a full crew, but we've got three, I think right now, three that will be able to possibly do that.
Could they help with the downtown area? Or is that specific?
Not necessarily during the storm, I mean, the trucks are all assigned to a roof.
A roof.
So, so the downtown is really going in half and back and cleaning it up.
All right. Well, we're, you feel we're in good shape and we've got extra people ready to go. Because we're supposed to have quite a winter if we listen to groundhogs.
Yeah, hearing different things.
Think it's much snow as we did rain.
Yes, true.
There was a point at which you would close dirt roads, what, two years ago? Two or three years ago? There are, with all non-paved roads, trying moments when you're plowing snow. And the new plows, without a flip lip, destroy the road along to the purposes. If you understand, if you've driven up plow, the bottom six or eight inches turns under when it hits an object. So when you come in the mud and if it doesn't, it's like this.
Yeah.
It's like using a chisel.
Yeah.
Right? It just goes right down and you, and you create this ditch and a washout possibility. So my question is, is Newport kept some of their old flip lips? Because if you go all with the nuance with no flips...
There's going to be a problem.
In times like that, you wind up with no fire protection. People on those roads, they pay the same taxes as anybody else does.
Paul, can you answer that question? Do we have flip lips?
I can honestly say, in my public works career, I have never heard of a flip lip plow, so I will need to inquire.
Okay.
Okay. And you may find that now the new plows, they're making them because of them. So if we don't have some, it could be part of your secondary problems.
Okay. Anything else? Conservation Commission. We have the chairman of the Conservation Commission here tonight. He would like to discuss a couple of things that the commission is thinking of talking to the town. Go ahead.
I'll keep this brief, but really just wanted to give a heads up that at our last meeting, we had a discussion about looking at zoning, especially as regards to wetlands. Wetlands have to be protected by state RSA. But particularly wetlands without some sort of buffer zone probably aren't protected. So we've got into the discussion of exploring whether, looking at the zoning, how we define wetlands and whether or not adding language of a buffer zone to wetlands makes sense for the town. So we are going to formulate a subcommittee and maybe expand the committee to add planning board. I'm having a little rethinking about that, maybe we want to really explore it very thoroughly at a subcommittee of the commission only first and then bring our thoughts to the planning board down the road. I kind of, I usually thought this was something that could be looked at and we could propose zoning changes if that's the way we want to go as soon as the coming town meeting. But I think that's going to be a project that takes a year, year and a half, maybe two. It will dovetail with the fact that we're going to have a natural resources inventory completed by the spring or summer this coming year. And we're working on, you know, the 10-year master plan... And we're working on, you know, the ten-year master plan has to be rewritten. A year and a half ago, it has to be written. So that will be done this year, I believe. So the timing is right to look at zoning. Actually, this weekend, I attended the conference down in Pembroke. And it got me thinking that we may really want to look a little more thoroughly at all of our wetlands ordinances. We only have four lines in the town ordinances regarding wetlands. We may want to look at whether defining them a little more rigorously makes sense. But I think right now, I see us at sort of a phase of looking at what other towns do, looking at the science regarding wetlands protection, and then naturally thinking about what it would entail, you know, to bring to the public a change in zoning. But that's sort of, I wanted, you know, the board tonight to know that this is something we're looking at.
Was there another part to that, Larry?
Well, there was, I don't know, steep slopes, maybe. Steep slopes, I got to thinking about, there was an excavation that has, we all kind of know about now up on North Main Street. And we don't have any ordinances as far as I know about steep slopes. But protecting wetlands is one thing. But with the biblical amount of rains we had this summer, that excavation and cutting into the hill going up Coit Mountain, you know, had a lot of wash down into the wetlands just north of Betty Avery's farm. So steep slope might be a part of what we want to look at ordinance proposals to go to the public vote. I'm learning a lot about all the process, so I think it will be a long, lengthy process. But I think right now, we'd like to study if it makes sense for the town, look at what other towns are doing, you know. We're obligated by RSA to do at least what the state says needs to be done to protect wetlands. There, I don't know if there's any steep slope ordinances at the state level. But it doesn't prohibit us from protecting wetlands to a greater degree if it makes sense.
Good.
Questions from the board?
Come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Larry. I'm sure that's not the last we've heard. Okay. We've done, under action items, we've done number one. B, Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission, letter of support. Paul, what is?
So the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission, in partnership with the Two Rivers, Takwichi Regional Commission, the Vermont side of the river, have proposed a pilot program to the U.S. Department of Transportation on education. It's late and it's time change, entitled Flood Resilient and Equitable Transportation Infrastructure for New Hampshire and Vermont. And they had asked us to send a letter of support for that grant. We've certainly done a lot of work with Upper Valley. They have helped us in many things. And I think that we will see some level of benefit from this program. I'm just asking more if we would decide that.
Comments on the board?
No reason why not.
Yeah, I mean, is there downside anywhere in this?
No, there's no cost to us.
No cost to us. Take a motion?
Move to have Paul get that one written?
I think he hasn't written.
Well, there is written. I'm gonna pass it around right now if you vote yes.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Abstained?
Boy, he's so efficient.
Yeah, Paul Brown sure is.
Breaking the permanent.
He keeps me alive for this.
Okay, so we'll sign that.
I know my place.
Passing it around. Okay. Good.
I was working my way up.
Approve new sewer rates. Comments, discussion from the board?
We've had them. I'll make a motion to approve the recommended sewer rates of sixteen dollars and seven cents per thousand gallons. Effective following the reading this month was the first billing in April 2024.
Second that.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a second? Any further discussion on the part of the board? Call for vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Posed? So you're upset, Paul?
I know, it was painful.
It was.
It was hard.
What's that?
The whole time, I wanted to be deliberate. You should have a draft.
You got your thing.
No, I read what I'm.
Of course you can. That doesn't involve anybody that doesn't have sewer, right?
That's correct. Well, it, this vote right here does not. We will be bringing forward an increase to the septic rates, which if you have a bleach field, a septic system and have it pumped, it will, you'll see an increase in that dimension also.
To the cost of the guy who's pumping it.
Correct.
Yeah.
But my water rate don't go up any, what I use for water.
Correct. Water rates have not been proposed to change.
Let's see, I had a D, open house rear entrance.
Opera house rear entrance.
Did I say opera house?
You said open house. You guys will get too old.
Those notes you took earlier.
I think everyone has noticed that the work at the back of the opera house is pretty much done except for a few punch list items. Most of this funding, four hundred and some thousand dollars of it, was, came from the state. And there was actually a ceremony where actually the governor dragged the executive counselor at the time, Joe Kenny, down here. And we had a ceremony where the town was presented with a big check, which I think is on the wall downstairs. And now that the work is done, I think in order to stay in goodwill, remind them how thankful we are. And so they thank fragrably upon us in the future. We should send a letter of thanks to the governor and executive council, you know, for their generosity, you know, whatever the right words are, you know, and saying how much we appreciate the end result. And that way, I mean, it's, you know, we keep in their good favor as we go forward.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Paul, can you write that letter?
Can I add one thing to that?
Of course you can.
Is that, I know it's not our representative anymore, but Councilor Kenny ought to be thanked for his efforts. You know, odds are that he may be back amongst us once again in the future. So he should know that we are appreciating of his efforts then and now.
I think Councilor Kenny is still very much interested. We should certainly include him. As I recall, at the time, it was a case where this went for governor and council. And supposedly Governor Snudu, when he said that, you know, you know, when they agreed to it, he turned to Joe and said, you and I are going to go to Newport and hand over the check. So it was like, yeah, we're going out on the road.
Good suggestion. Paul, do you, would you want this, the board to have, sign that, sign on to that?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
We've got something else we're gonna be signing anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead.
This is not directly related, however. Is there any, could you give some, maybe further clarification on the grant that we ended up not getting for paving these parking lots and restructuring them along the lower one?
Congressional earmark.
Yeah, and whether that may happen or not happen again in the future?
So we did, we put in a congressional earmark, through Senator Sheehan's office, for three quarters of a million dollars to do the two back parking lots. It came, it was recommended by the senator's office. They vet the projects initially, and it went to the committee, but it did not come out of committee. It was not approved coming out of committee. We will certainly, when the request for congressional directed spending comes out again, we respond to both representative and our senator in that. I'm not sure for the current budget environment if they will continue or not. But if they do, when we are requested, we have a list of projects always at the ready for.
And that project was not just paved in the parking lot, it was correcting drainage of their first. So a lot of digging up, correcting drainage of both parking lots and that.
The stairs going down. It was a substantial project. I just, you know, being new, understanding the administrative grant and a congressional earmark, you know, it's not necessarily something that I understand. And there's a learning process here for me. And there's no, you know, selectmen school that I get to go to. So if I ask questions that may seem, you know, strange, or maybe the public also has the same questions to understand what those may be, to know what an earmark is, basically, we're asking for money from the state to do certain things, not necessarily. From the feds. Okay.
Right. I guess so much money was set aside through some bill a few years ago to be allocated out over five years. One of the COVID recovery bills, I think, that included money, I believe, for congressional earmarks, so much per year. What we are finding, we're like back in the old days, a decade or so ago, when a congressional earmark was, you know, granted to a community, it's like, here's your check, you know, don't leave any money on the table. Now it goes to whatever federal agency that they feel it should go through. And then that agency gets it, and it's like, well, Newport's getting so much money. Why don't we ask for a fifty percent match on that? You know, and I think generally, we've been seeing like twenty percent match on stuff. So, you know, it's not, here's your check, go at it. It's like, you know. But one thing I would say in the past, Newport has been providing, you know, detailed engineering. Here's what we need, here's the benefits. So, you know, I think our proposals, you know, get a good look at the, you know, wherever we submit.
And I believe we have a grant writer?
The police department writes all of their grants individually. The fire chief has written several grants for Fire Act. So different departments will write different grants.
We always do worry that if we're too successful, somebody's gonna look at that and say, well, they've got all this. So, you know, let's pass them over to this. But we have no indication that's happened, but we worry about it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Next item is to authorize the town manager, or interim town manager, or whatever Paul is or wishes to be, to work on easement, assign an easement for, with Eversource for a community center, for poles with community center.
So essentially, three poles coming down Meadow Road, essentially where the current rope fence is. So they'll be out on the curb in the right of way. And that's to get the power.
This is granting Eversource an easement to put poles on the town property.
Right. So the town is asking them to put poles on the property, and they've said yes, give us the information.
I'll make a motion. We authorize Paul Brown to sign whatever he needs to, to make Eversource to put poles on town property to.
Why don't they put it on the curb?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Second that.
Ish. Because I asked the question, because it would look so much better without the poles.
Right.
But the net, the net increase on fifteen.
Will you use the poles to hang lights for the ball field?
Give the layout, I don't think so.
Okay.
You can ask.
Dual purpose.
Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Abstained?
Very much.
Open forum.
Time for public. Mr. Wesley, you had to hand up first.
Well, I'm gonna make this short. Ray Barrett, it's all started here, so I'm gonna cut it through quick for you, because it's late. So Ray Barrett, he used to be a selectman, but he lived in Sunapee. So they allowed him because he did a fantastic job. So when he ended that, they came out and voted on this. So the town of Newport, okay, they voted. If you're a town manager, if you're a selectman, you have to live in the town of Newport within sixty days. You don't, you have to, you have to live there. They voted on it, okay? So, like I said, I'm gonna skip through this just.
Who voted on it?
Who voted?
Talking about Tom Sunapee?
The selectmen, and they voted that that's the way it's gonna be. And this will come into it, okay? So, well, I was gonna do this one on you, but it's getting late. So we have, we have a past town manager that was making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then he had holidays, then we had four weeks. And he was making a lot of money. And people are trying to find out exactly how much that town manager made for all these years. But what the selectmen, he, they're trying to figure it out. And they figured, numerous people, that the town, he kept some of that, was running. Now, we're gonna ask the selectmen for an answer the next meeting when we come to it. He is making, on an average, two hundred thousand dollars, when he shouldn't be, he keep getting that kind of money. Two hundred thousand dollars, because he's getting extra stuff. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna save some of this other stuff, because it's getting late. So I made this up.
So can I just ask you a question? Because I wasn't quite sure what you were.
How much money does the town manager?
That's the question. How much money did he get?
We're saying two hundred thousand, because he's got all this stuff that he's getting. Well, nobody really knows, okay? Because when you allow him, this is gonna help you. This is gonna help you immensely. If I can get it, I'm gonna give it to you. And hopefully, hopefully, you gentlemen can read the page all the way through.
Can I ask you, is this pertaining to the new hire as opposed to what we did in the past? So are you asking what we intend on going forward in terms of someone living in? I'm not sure where the question lies within this. I mean, I know you're gonna hand this out, but.
They, they voted, okay, that if you are gonna have a job from the town, selectmen, the town manager down through, you have to live in the town, in the town. You have to live. And if you read that next one very carefully, okay. So you can take it home, you can read it, and there's, it's a sad, it's a very, very sad thing. This thing got dragging on, or whatever you want to call it for. And I had some of this other stuff, but I'm gonna let them take the thing on this. And now if somebody wants an answer from the town, and nobody gives them an answer, including, I tried and tried, tried, tried and tried twenty-five times, you ask a question, they don't give you an answer. Oh, well, we'll think about it. Now, Mr. Kessler over here, he was, he was the chair. And I have the documentations for it. The town manager said that he had an easement on my property. Mr. Kessler did right. Mr. Kessler did right. He said, okay, give Mr. Winslow, give him, because it was 16 years. And he said, Joe, give him a copy. My lawyer, because he said it publicly, my lawyer said, you don't have an easement. It's 16 years. You're gonna move your pipe. They don't do it. You gotta move your pipe for 16 years. So that went on, but nobody answers. So, and I, I've got some stuff in here, but I really don't wanna do it now, because everybody's...
Mr. Winslow, we're here, you're here. If you've got some stuff, share it. Let us all have it. That way we're not wondering. We're here. Take the time, share it.
No, I'm coming next meeting, then I'm gonna have.
It just belongs, I'm just trying to help you out.
Yes, no, I greatly appreciate it. But when, he did exactly right. He said, give Mr. Winslow a copy, okay? Now, if you, now, what you people are doing, I had it all stamped, okay? And it's very, very, very clear. It's the federal, and I stamped it. None of you people answered. None of you people answered what was filed in there. Why didn't they answer it? I don't know. But it was all listed, and some of the people know exactly what I'm talking about. So, I did have a schedule, but I didn't think I was gonna be here this long. But I'll definitely be back. And we're asking, we're asking, if you read that, if you, up on the top, very high, it explains, if you have bad faith, okay, and you use your power, that's illegal. And it's right on the top of that, all listed. And I have another someplace to go.
It's on top of what?
He's saying he's gonna sue us for $300,000 each, abuse of power and prejudice.
Yeah, but it's right up on top, and you read it, because that's federally, federally.
I don't, I don't know what I'm talking about. Can you guys, let me? And I don't, Dick, I don't see what you're referring to. I see it at the bottom, it's like a federal constitution.
Right, right here.
I just read that. Abuse of power and prejudice. So you're saying we abused our power, and we're prejudiced against you.
100%, but it's documented. If you people would read this and answer, answer a question, I wouldn't be standing here today, but when I'm coming back.
What's your question?
Pardon?
What's the question?
Answer questions when somebody asks them, but you never do it.
He gave us a list of questions, I do remember that. We answered, I think, three of them. And after that, I...
The federal constitution is very clear. It says, it says right down, right down here. Now, I had my thing down there with the state.
What thing?
You didn't see?
I did, but you're referring to so many things, I'm having a difficult time following along.
Okay. When I come back, I'll make sure that you can see it, because it's very clear. Because I had the animal shelter, okay, for over 27 years. The federal government has control, not you, not you. The federal government has control, and I listed it to them, and I had a woman stamp it. I was right up to date. So you people are trying to tell me to do this and do that, and you can't do it. The federal government won't allow you to do it. And I sent that to you, and there was all stamped.
Clearly, we disagree, so.
You have to, you have to do what the federal law says. The federal law.
I get that.
But you don't do it.
We've left an opinion that says otherwise, Dick, so I don't understand, when we've sent you letters, we've talked about that in the past, that it's the same story year over year. Nothing has changed.
Has it?
No. I've read it.
When you abuse your power from the federal government, okay, it's very clear, very clear, because that was 16 years.
I don't think we feel we've abused our power. I don't think we've abused our power, we haven't shown prejudice. I spent a day with you, or part of a day, and enjoyed it.
And what did you tell me?
I told you that I think you might have a case, after I went through everything, and I asked to have a meeting with Paul.
And what does that say when I stamped them? The federal government has control. We don't have control. The federal government has control, and it's very clear, they can't do it.
I, we have a disagreement maybe needs to be settled in court.
Oh, go God, that, don't worry about that, because...
Well, don't you worry either, because there's two sides to everything, okay? And recently, you know, when I get a letter that says I'm gonna be personally sued for $300,000, you know, I'm gonna...
Did that come up to 2.5 million?
2,000, 2,400,000. That's what you're asking for.
No, no, things have changed, because there's eight, there's eight, there's eight that are...
That you're gonna sue?
I didn't say that. If you were suing, we're gonna be sued. Okay, that's right. But if you read this, eight of them, okay?
So we're public officials, you're gonna sue each one of us for 300,000. Tell me why anybody in their right goddamn mind would ever run for an office when they have to put up with this? And that's where I've reached right now, because you sent a couple of things to me that I think, you know, you wrote me a note, where the heck that came from, that said, if you're gonna go to court and perjure yourself, we can prove it. You're accusing me of perjury before we even go to court.
I didn't say that.
You did too. You said that. And I've reached a point, we have documentation that speaks differently from what you're saying, okay? I don't mind listening to you. In fact, I've talked to you a lot.
That's right.
And I've listened to you a lot. But enough is enough, when you threaten my livelihood, my future, and you threaten everybody here, enough is enough, Dick. Put up or shut up, one or the other. And I've had it with you telling, in trying to intimidate us with the whole process. And that's where I am right now, telling you right up front. I've enjoyed talking to you in the past, but enough is enough.
Okay. So the constitution is so clear.
I read the constitution, I know the constitution.
Do you?
Yes, I do. I've taken courses in the constitution.
What you said, I'm not gonna, I agree with you, okay?
Well, you are.
Okay, now, now you're telling me nobody else is suing you, right? Oh, okay.
Well, if you, whoever it is, tell them to come on down. I'm sorry, folks, but enough's enough to me. I'm to the point where I'm thinking, what the heck am I doing this for? I'm trying to help, work with the town, work with the people. I listen to Dick often, and I've enjoyed many of our conversations. But enough is enough. When you threaten me and this board with this kind of lunacy, then I'll tell you right now, I'm gonna fight back. I'm gonna fight back.
I know you have people, but when I, they had it stamped, and you people don't understand what the...
I understand what that means, but I also understand, we've got documentation that says the exact opposite of what you're saying.
Not after 16 years, you do.
Okay. Sorry, folks, but enough's enough for me. The hell out, heck out of you.
Who's next to raise their hand?
You go first. You damn chicken. You had your hand up first. All right, we gotta have a little fun. Now I'm gonna complain about you, okay? I'm gonna go back to Dan O'Neill, and Bernie Waugh put together statewide all of the stuff that zoning boards and planning boards needed, and did classes around the state. Yep, that was great, because me, at that time, I was against this regulation, overregulation. So I went to the meetings, and then I began to understand the connection between the law and why. And with Bernie's retirement, essentially, that's gone away. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons I got off both the planning and zoning board was because we're not following the law in many instances. There was a case, an individual had a lot, call it a rectangular lot, for the purpose of this, and at one end of it was a wetlands, and at the other end was fine. And we were asked to give a variance. The board was ready to give a variance on the entire property for the setback. I said, no, he does have a hardship with the wetlands, but it's not the whole piece of property. So let's narrow it down, give him what he needs here, but not change it on the rest of it. In other words, you solve the problem, but don't go overboard. It became clear to me that between, let's see, Ben Nelson, Dave Burnham, and Ken Merritt, those are the people that know what's gotta be done, and what people have to adhere to, and et cetera. The rest are in limbo. I'm not disparaging them, because I believe it's the town's responsibility to make sure that they follow the book. Now, we're into this Ruger building thing, and what really happened there? If you understand the case, New Hampshire Supreme Court case, Winslow versus Holdenis, you have to be impartial as the law, if humanity will admit. That means you meet the juror devoir, the same as if it would be a murder trial, or any other burglary, or whatever the fuck, right here in Solon County Superior Court. If the judge asks you, do you know this person? You say yes, you don't say no. All of that criteria, it is there when you're required to notice and hear. And the boards don't know that. And it's, on the Ruger building, it's clear. Jim voted for $300,000. In order for him to do that, he had to have mentally concluded that this was a project that was going forward, and that he would embrace. The vote tells you that. Outside of that, somebody'd say, wait a minute now, they haven't been through this, or this, or this. So that in and of itself is significant. And then, at a public hearing, to shut somebody down, wow. What's a public hearing for? I mean, what do the words mean? Public hearing? And the person that's not germane? That is not for you to determine. It is for the person who wants to express himself. Dick, obviously, has a hard time expressing himself. So who and when do you cut their throat to speak?
I didn't cut him off.
No, you did with me, and I told you, and you understood.
Yep.
It was done, right here, in this room, at the last zoning board meeting. So what's, what's wrong here is we're missing that other educational part to bring zoning board members up where they understand. I talk with one, he clearly doesn't understand. So how does this happen? What are you doing? You're taking our constitutional property rights and subjecting us to people who are not properly trained and don't understand the law. It has to be healed. If you lose one of the three that I mentioned, it is another catastrophe. At catastrophe, another one, because you're losing that institutional, to use Jim's own words, institutional knowledge. But where is, where is that knowledge? There was a meeting that I did not attend of the zoning board, but I watched it on NCTV, and wow, the applicant, four times, had interrupted after they were in deliberative session, without the chair recognizing that person to speak. Why does the law separate the meetings into non-deliberative and deliberative? It's intentional, so that someone doesn't come in and change things later on. You make sure you give everybody the opportunity to speak, and then it's done. You've gotta make a decision based on what's in front of you. So I got in the truck, I drove down here, spoke speed on it, on the way, by the way, and walked in and said, hey, you can't do this. Two people, the chief's back there somewhere, right?
It's ice squinted when you said that.
So two, two people agreed with me immediately. I was on the zoning board, so I had a vote. That was three. And then finally, we got the fourth, and Jeff voted no. Now how many years has Jeff been in this swamp, I'm gonna call it a derogatory term? He shouldn't have known better. It had to stop. And the beauty of stopping it then, rather than allowing it to go through, was it goes through, then the only response after that is to bring in an appeal or litigate. So if you can solve the problem before the tree hits the ground, there's a benefit there. So you now, and I asked Paul, I believe you have an appeal of the Ruger decision. And this time, you have to protect the town and the applicant, because the applicant, right now, his cart's been turned upside down.
Yeah.
Why? Who did that? Who caused that? People that didn't know. What Jim did at that meeting, to me, was very repulsive. That being said, if in fact we are not going to do it right, then we want more wetlands regulations, we want more other regulations, where does it end? If you are not going to treat them correctly, or people get periphrancer treatment, something's wrong. So I will say, that's gotta be fixed, but we'll see, at this next zoning board meeting, just exactly what happens. And, and I'm gonna threaten you, solve it, because this Ruger mill person, that citizen coming forward, has a right to his property rights. And your absence of knowledge, and not doing the right thing, and ignoring it after being told, wow. So take it from there, it's gotta change. So that all being said, call it being warned, and you don't like it, I'm sure, it's gotta change. And that's one. And number two.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You're saying an appeal has been put forth to the zoning board?
Yes, that's my belief. I asked, I asked.
Does that happen, Paul?
It hasn't been processed yet, but I saw an email.
Okay.
Because that's the way you should go with it.
Yes, yes. And the beauty of that is, it starts all new. The old stuff is unimportant. It's all new. So all new, you've got to find at least three people that can sit, that meet the juror devoir. And when you do that, that person is lucky, because he gets his approval, and down the road he goes, and the town is safe. If you can't do that by the next meeting, then I'm gonna take the case. And that's a threat, because it has to end somewhere. Education, knowledge.
And what, I don't wanna interrupt you, but can I ask, what was the basis of the appeal? What you've talked about here tonight, or was it, what was the ordinance that was appealed?
Well, first of all...
And I may be way off in asking it that way.
First, the jury.
Okay.
Okay. The understanding of what a board member's responsibilities are when he's on a zoning or planning board and the law says, and the Supreme Court case says, and I've read it for you right here, is, number one, you've gotta be impartial. If in fact, the hearing is a public hearing and requires notice, those are the triggers to the constitutional rights to have property in this country. They need to be understood by those who wield the weapons of destruction for your rights because of their ignorance or lack of training. So who is responsible for the training?
Can I just, I think that's an excellent question that we need to answer. Because I remember sitting on the planning board, I didn't know anything. And the only way I dealt with it was to listen to Bert Spalding and what he said, I said, "Must be a mistake."
That was a mistake. Which is why we got a legal opinion before I sat on that meeting, before I spoke at that meeting. So we were educated. I wasn't educated before that meeting.
Well, you know a lot more about it than I ever did when I sat on the plan.
Well, it depends on, you know, Jim, when you talk to a lawyer, the information you give him is what he makes a decision on as he looks at the law. And so therefore, you preempt where it comes from. You had no right to sit on that meeting, Jim, period.
So we asked the question after you posed the question to Mr. Kessler about his inability to sit and whether somebody else who had previously heard information about that case could sit.
You need to get...
The answer was yes.
Okay.
So if there's a disagreement there, we'll let that appeal play out and see how that goes.
All right.
So I just, I don't want you to think that we don't, we just willy-nilly go at things. We did take the time to educate ourselves to find out what we could and should be doing, and we did that. So I don't want you to think that we just are haphazardly going along, because I certainly don't operate that way and wouldn't want people to feel that way.
Well, I would like people to feel that way. First of all, you've got a bad attorney. That's my opinion. Second of all, what was the question that you asked of him and what did he know of what was going on? Clear Supreme Court language makes it that you have to meet these conditions. And Jim, you didn't. So give it a break. What I'm saying to you is, the solution here is real simple. Find three people that haven't voted on this to sit. Give them education that they need to get through this hearing when it should happen.
But it's more than just three people, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's more than just three people who, you know, find three people who didn't vote. It's three people who haven't already formed an opinion in front of this process. That's where that case, because when you brought it up first time, I went and looked it up because I had all kinds of misunderstanding of it. And so it's, if you've expressed an opinion or you have decided this is right or this is wrong, I tell you, there's nobody on this board that can sit with that aspect. So I don't know where the heck we'd find three people, Brett, to be honest with you. You know, Paul and I have talked about this, you know, first has to go to the zoning board. You're going about it the right way. Okay? It's gonna go to the zoning board, and then we can move from that. So follow the process there, the process that needs to take place. And that's why when you first brought that up to me about the three people, you know, I talked to Paul about it and we talked about the zoning board and the proper way to go about it, and you're going about it the proper way.
Okay? That's the hurdle.
I'd like to say something possible. I know, Bert, you and I, I've already spoken about this, but I mean, I personally feel that Jim was not biased on this. And while I understand that you, what you're saying about the $300,000, I also know that there's other things that he wasn't in love with on this. And it ties back to the Warren sewage and asking for a break and things like that. So it went both ways, and I feel that because of that, it wasn't necessarily, yeah, I voted yea here, but it was very much, was not, what you see as one side may not be, and I really feel that Jim is, for anyone, is one of the most impartial people to sit on that. And I don't wanna get in an argument about it here. I really don't, and I know it's gonna go forward, but I was gonna tell you what I've seen of Jim as a person and as someone who likes this community and can see things from an impartial perspective, and I don't believe that he ever came into that meeting with the intention of taking this one way or that, he was simply looking at what was being presented as a new case and having judgment on that. And then where that goes with you, I don't know. I can only tell you, as I saw it, as he has spoken about this project in different ways, that it wasn't always one way or the other. So that's just how I've seen it myself, so.
Okay, let's draw a line now. Coming forward for this next one, he can't sit.
He what? He can't?
Sorry. Of course he can't. He's already expressed himself.
That's interesting. I guess by that, how do you come up with an appeal? What's the appeal process? I mean, when it's, because I looked at this, and I, I'm not gonna say I have all the answers. I studied law long enough to be dangerous and stupid, but an appeal with these...
Okay.
You go ahead, go ahead, I'll shut it.
I've said my piece and you guys have said yours. So going forward, that's it. So that takes care of number one.
Okay.
All right. Number two is, you're going forward with the CMR bridge. Wonderful plan. And there's one thing I'm gonna get to at the end of, but I'm gonna talk about where we are right now. They've set it up right, they're doing it right, the deck is already made, they've gotta place the deck, and we went from $400,000 that was in CIP, how much approximately is this? What was the bid?
Two and a quarter.
Excuse me?
Two and a quarter.
So we're ahead of the game there. Now, if you can picture a bridge that you can, let's say, walk under, water runs in that channel.
Yeah.
So much volume goes through, and when there's an obstruction, the volume is reduced. On the outside of that bridge, outlet side, you have an in and an out. There is a small island right in the brook that is the major cause for the flooding of Channel's Mills Road when the water is high. So I say, they're right there right now, excavator there, they're working right there. That little island, you take it with the excavator, you take it out. It is about five feet wide and eight feet long and probably 18 inches deep, high. So now the water goes left, right, and then over the top, when it can't get through, it backs up. It's something like a beaver deal. So while they're there and at this amount of money that we're putting into that bridge and we're not doing that, I'm surprised. I do not know that we're not, but it hasn't done so far.
Have you talked to Paul about this?
No.
Okay. Paul, I think you've got something out that needs to be looked at from first blush of what you're saying, all of you. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Right. Well, there's one additional thing. The old abutments, the original abutments, come in at the bottom, and they also take away flow. But those are staying because you can't take away the old ones without taking the new ones away. You're gonna use the existing abutments, call those the new ones. So this interference down here has to stay. That's the foundation. But that island does not. It's not under the bridge.
Gotcha.
It's after the bridge. So you're gonna reach down...
Pull the belt.
Pull it out and be done. Okay? Outside of that, the vegetation continues to root and dig in, and eventually, when something comes downstream, it gets caught there and the backup gets even worse.
I was out at the bridge today. It makes absolute sense. I'm not telling them I gotta do it, I don't have a permit, so we can talk to...
Can we get a permit and get it done?
Well...
We will stop a backup, that's what I'm hearing here.
No, it's a great idea. I don't disagree at all. It's just illegal.
Okay.
And I would rather not sign onto that. I don't have any problem calling the DES and saying, "Come up, look at it, we'd like to take this island out, and what do we need?"
Well, let's do it.
I'll make that call tomorrow.
Okay.
Maybe Wednesday, because of interviews tomorrow. That, I don't have a problem. But I think that Mr. Spalding might have mentioned it to the contractor, because he mentioned that one of the local property owners had thought it would be nice to go in and grab it, and he was reluctant to do so.
Yep.
He does most of his work in Vermont, but he thought that New Hampshire DES may not like it.
Well, let's find out. You know, I thought, well, we'll take it.
I totally agree. If they'll let us go in and grab it with his excavator, we've got about three weeks, that's one of my points, we've got about three weeks while he's on site. I think it would be a great thing to do.
Good.
So the washouts that you had this year, you had to get DES permits in order to do your repairs?
We did some work on emergency work. But we weren't in the stream bed.
You went what now?
In the stream bed. In the stream bed.
See that? That goes fast.
Yeah, I can't say it one time.
You, okay, that's, this removal could be done under the same emergency part where they come up and say, "Okay, yes, and look at the criteria." So now going back to my conversation with them, I gave them space off the side to go on and told them not to turn around in one driveway, but use the driveway further down that I gave permission to you guys to use, and we have a good rapport. And so as I was there, I said, "Hey", I said, "That oughta come out, and it oughta." And so anybody here that goes and looks at it would say, "It's gotta come out." So DES will probably come to the same conclusion and give you an emergency permit to take it out because you are there and you certainly don't want this excavator crawling on your brand-new...
Bridge.
Bridge, which it's already made, they've just gotta place it. You'd prefer that excavator to be loaded on a truck and rubber tires go across. So that's just my question. If it can be done, then it would be a great thing to do. Outside of that, you take the chance of actually losing a bridge. If we get rainstorms that keep stepping up, because we are already beyond the capacity of that bridge to pass water, and we're not increasing its ability, we're leaving it to decrease. And we already have, the last time that the water came up was high enough that it left just the hump in the road by the big house. So that's all you can do.
Good points. Thank you. And you're gonna follow up with that, Paul?
I'm gonna follow up with that.
You still in public comment?
Yeah.
We gotta take a setback for a minute. I just wanna add a couple of questions, ask Paul, that's the main thing. Paul, that building down there, next to the barn-style building, that, how many years old is that?
I would guess 20.
20?
I guess.
You know what that building would cost to rebuild, to put that back now?
Oh, I bet it's $25,000 at least.
You wanna look at about $200,000?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
That building, I just put one up, it's smaller than that, and I got, and mine is five, six years old, and I got over $60,000 in it, okay? That building down there with an upstairs and everything, that building to put it up today is probably $200,000. Did you think about moving that building?
We did actually have a discussion about it.
Did you ever ask a price on having it moved?
We did not.
Okay. I've asked a couple of people just for prices. That building could be moved from there and put it to highway garage or whatever with a cement slab and fix the repairs that's needed that have been lacking on it, probably for $50,000. You know, that building's been used for a good many years down there. I just, you know, last week when I come back and they were down there cutting holes in the roof, I just couldn't believe it when I saw that. Or that building could have been sold, somebody would have moved it, you know, including myself, you know? I probably would have took that one, you know, buying it for a small fair, you know, and then having you pay it, tear it down. That building could have been moved and put up for $50,000 somewhere, you know, cement slab and put back together. Because they'd just take the top part off it on one truck and, you know, from here to the highway, it'd be no problem at all, you know?
Like you said, we did have a limited discussion, the plan along with demolition, but in the last month and a half, we did ask the question.
Okay. Next question is, have you checked, with the rec center going in floodplains, have you checked on insurance for that area?
No, we have not. I mean, we're currently insured for the two buildings next to it.
Yeah, but that's not a multimillion dollar building.
It isn't, but they don't, to our insurance company, I don't think that matters. We are raising the building some, and the lily field is going to be reduced because they have to keep the water on the property or some analogy to that. So we're raising the building, dropping the ball field, so that will take the water initially.
You know, I've heard you guys talking, and you guys are short on money and getting that thing done, and I just, you know, I just, and everybody seems to say that it's not gonna cost the taxpayers any money, but to find help to clean the place, the new building that's going up, we've gotta pay custodians. You ain't gonna have your rec center people, I mean, the normal people that are out doing the cemetery stuff cleaning that and keeping it clean, maintaining a building like that. This is the problem, you know, maintenance and stuff like that, that's where it's gonna cost the taxpayer. It's like right now, you know, I drive Bell Nap every day, I see that they've replaced the whole handicap ramp, all the boards on the handicap ramp in the rec center now and working right now. Why are we putting money into that now?
Well, the ramp was dangerous. So I didn't realize they replaced all the boards. I knew that they had a number of boards to replace.
Oh, yeah, they put a log in it.
Because somebody was gonna go through them walking, unless somebody in a chair potentially. And we were gonna be in that building for another, almost two years. So it was felt we had to reinvest in that ramp to make it safer.
All right. I just, you know, I just see ashamed of that building being, you know, I see in Friday time down there, I had to get down and be nosy and check it out, you know? I just put one of those up that, I would have liked that barn-style building, but I couldn't afford that, you know? And that was six years ago, or seven years ago when I put mine up, the amount of money. So, but I think if it would have went out forbidden, we would have found somebody, even myself, probably would have thrown a couple of grand at it and removed it, you know? You know?
Yeah.
Looking out for the taxpayer, you know?
You want the ambulance building? You want the ambulance building?
No, no, the ambulance, I jumped, that's been put together, you know? But that other building, somebody could have moved that, you know, and the small repairs that's needed, you know, they had it all open, so I did look it over and I, you know... You probably didn't know we were gonna do that, but I'm sitting here thinking, you know, we get good, most of the time, we get good things from the open forum. I wish you'd brought it up sooner.
Well, I didn't know that...
But you didn't know we were gonna be doing that.
Didn't know it.
You know, if we ever get in a situation like that again, you've raised something that we can think about.
Yeah, yeah. It's one of those things you see going on, and that's why I'm here.
And if you bought it, we'd buy you a new pair of dungarees, so.
Oh, come on, that's a style. It is a style. It is, yeah. Tell me why you didn't call the fire department and report it?
Report what?
The fire? That they were burning it.
So it's coming down Thanksgiving. I mean, should someone wanna purchase it and take it away between now and Thanksgiving? Is there anything that's opposed to that happening?
Probably not.
I'm just saying, it's not gone yet, and should we care to open that up to a purchase and removal by Thanksgiving Day? Is that...
Well, it's...
I'm not saying you necessarily, I'm just saying that it's...
And we have that posted. Bids turning around, take a week to bid.
Is it in a condition where somebody want it now? I mean, didn't you say they were burning it?
No, no, no. They, they, they put smoke, I don't think they put smoke to the cemetery garage. They cut holes in the roof of the cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay. And then they, they put a smoke barrel in the ambulance garage.
Good.
We can ask.
Well, thank you. Wait, bring that up.
You just have to think ahead of time with some of these buildings that, that can be moved, you know?
Good point.
You know?
Thank you. Okay. Communication, order selection. Jeff?
I'm good.
Jim?
Good.
Jeff?
I believe someone was going to talk about the potholes.
Me.
That was you?
Yeah.
Okay, that was you. Okay, so, so I will not talk about them since you're going to talk about them.
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that the fence at the park is kind of tipped over and it's flopping and.
Which park?
Meadow Park.
Meadow Park.
Right along the playground. Safety hazard, who knows? I don't know if somebody hit it with a car or what. And the other thing I wanted to mention, just because I got the email, I'm sure you all get the email, vandalism and stuff.
Yeah.
It appears that Claremont, Springfield and Corridinville had vandalism issues lately. I just, when I sent the guy back a response, I says, you're absolutely right. It's worth mentioning.
Yeah.
Keep your eyes open.
And I, there is no place for, it wasn't just vandalism, it was hate that was expressed. There, there's no place for that, but unfortunately, more and more of that seems to be coming out. And I'm not going to ask the chief if they've got the sons of guns and did it, but I hope they do get caught, and I hope they're punished when they do it, because that was, that was pure hate. And they, first of all, they showed they couldn't even spell, so, you know.
Happy to give an update on the investigation. We've, we're really pulling out all the stops, both to identify the people that did it and to prevent additional occurrences. We had another vandalism incident over the weekend. I'm starting, I've put some plainclothes officers in unmarked vehicles out at night trying to catch the people in the act. Our detectives have sent search warrants to internet service providers, trying to call cell phone data in the area of the incidents. That's going to take some time to come back. We've worked with the attorney general's office on the hate crime component to, to that offense. So we had three New Hampshire State Police detectives working with us the next day just for additional manpower knocking on doors, harvesting home security camera footage. We put online a QR code and a link where people can upload their own video that will come directly to us. So, so we're, we're pursuing every single avenue. I am optimistic that we're going to identify a suspect, but I think it's probably going to take a couple of weeks to, for all the evidence and all the data to come back and, and point us in the right direction.
One of the state troopers left a card and I said, call me. I went, oh, what am I being sued for now?
Yeah, I mean, we had, that day, we had.
He asked me, yeah, he told me, he said, that comes from Sheriff Barry. But it's, you know, it made me pause and think about security in my own house with that. And Deb and I have talked about that. Should we put some things up to see that? But to me, it's, see, it's more than vandalism. To me, it's, it's hate that I, that I can't condone at all. None of us here would condone that hate. Yes?
Look at the Supreme Court justices and what happened.
Yeah.
Where society is charged in a very detrimental way.
Yep.
And it appears that it's going to proliferate.
Yeah.
And the crimes that are committed, cell phone assault, cell phone. Jim, you break the back door and I'll watch the front door and your own cell phones or whatever.
Yeah. And that's what one guy was saying, I was listening to. Problem is right here. That's what's creating the problem.
Yeah.
And so it made me to stop and think about, of course, I'm not on TikTok, never would be on TikTok, but TikTok's owned by China, by the way. Gives a people.
And as we're winding down, can I put one more thing to that?
Yeah.
The school board and administration.
Yeah.
Took away the cell phones in the middle school.
Yeah.
And we expected a rage of parents and zero.
Yeah.
Parents and only two kids. So that tells me clearly, the parents know that it shouldn't be there, and most of the kids know.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Just real quick, I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board, but please thank the rest of your office for their hard work and diligence on not only this case, but all the cases. I know that, you know, manpower is certainly, you know, important for everybody, but cases like this that become the, you know, the forefront of the community and touches a lot of people negatively, so pass it on from at least me and the rest of the board, I'm sure that.
Right.
I will.
We appreciate the extra efforts.
I will pass that on, and we're very, very fortunate that we have a good relationship with the state police, the county sheriffs, our neighboring agencies, and we're not too proud to, you know, push the help button when we need it. In that case, we had, I think, six different crime scenes to process that morning, and we probably knocked on well over 100 doors. And you just can't do that with one or two officers on duty, so we asked for help. We got it immediately.
And to bring it back around, I'm sure the ILO was part of this too, so.
He was. He absolutely was.
Yes, Perry.
So I saved him some work. My Trump sign went through hell. They stole it, they ran over it, they tore it apart.
They got it 25 feet.
They painted it twice. So now I've taken that workload right off.
I'm going to cut the holes down.
Okay, I just want, go ahead, Bert.
Nope, nope. That was.
Okay, I just want to mention, I did receive some communication, or we all did, an email from Bill Willmont. And this is the second time he's written about this, and I've talked to other people about it. The interchange between state road and town road and the potholes that are kind of on both. I look up here, going up, there's one street where you come up and you can't, if you're going to go around the pothole and somebody wants to turn, you're going to get hit. Is there anything that we can do about that? I mean.
At the, well, we, we alert the state to problems and keep on the standing, the stuff, the traffic circle right now is just horrible. And then you got to get.
Yeah, right down there. Yeah, right down here.
Yeah.
I'm talking behind, like, up from Coronas is that, that road that's one way that you go up. It's terrible.
So it's, it's on our.
Cross Street.
Cross Street. Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
You go down Cross Street, you come up now.
Yeah, yeah, and it's.
Right, it's coming up or going down?
Well, it's right up when you go onto the state road.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah. And the other day, you know, I had to go way out around or go deep into a ditch.
We, we, they spent a few days last week when it was nice weather, patching that we could get paper, patching potholes. I don't know if this was on their list or not.
Yeah, yeah. And the state, I know they often forget the western portion of state of New Hampshire, but I'd like to remind them that we're here, and we need help with that. I mean, unless they want to pay for new tires and alignments and things like that.
Certainly you need to stay left when you go into the traffic circle. There's a left or right going around it.
Yeah. That's all I had. Town manager, anything for communication?
Well, as a matter of fact, I do. So just, Bert started the discussion about Chandler's Mills Bridge project started middle of last week. They are maintaining one lane at all times, so they're doing half with the precast slabs and then doing the other half. There'll be three to four weeks to completion. But moving along and took Chris up there today, so we met the contractor and we'll be monitoring the job. So there was that. And then the other thing is Chairman Schissel alluded to it, master plan is coming up. The survey is back online. It can either be taken through Survey Monkey, which will tally it for us, or you can print a copy and then write it, and then we will get it entered into Survey Monkey. But so that's on the Times website and available for processing.
Okay. Of course you can.
Could you pass me by?
I would like to.
Yeah, all I said, all I said was if you were going to talk about the holes.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so I would like to mention something about that as well, which is, unless it was addressed today or something, the bottom of Elm Street in particular has a rather large hole and still wash out from the storm. And I only see, there's the areas that are, that are particularly bad. I don't know if it was filled recently, but it is like a doozy. And when those spots in the winter fill in, there just is no putting winter pack in them. It comes out and a day it's gone.
Yeah.
So I just, it's just one that I had noted, because I drive that road a lot, and I didn't drive it to there, but I did look at it on Friday and it was still there then. It's, it's, it's a lot. So that is, that is our road and, and maybe, I just know that, I know that they're, they're stopping to make the mix. Like, if they haven't already, I know Newport's not making it anymore, so it's, it's a trek to get it. So I'm not sure what's happening there.
Okay. I didn't mean to overlook you.
It's okay.
In fact, I thought you would.
It's okay.
Also, on Bellknap, now, I think, you know, a couple months, in months ago, they mentioned about the, the water that goes down from, from the common goes down Bellknap.
Yeah.
Okay? And it comes out right at that drain, right across the rec center. Now, if somebody don't get after, I mean, you guys say it's a state deal.
That is a state.
Okay? Well, somebody needs to crack the whip on the state because we're going to have all ice down there.
Yeah.
And that's going to be one hell of a mess. Because the water does not make it to the river.